A moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one country, with equal authority and justice for all. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Houck?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Present.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radal?
Here.
Ms. Sedman? Seven?
You have to unmute yourself.
Wait a minute. Here.
Mr. Snee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Mr. Dulugon, your round report on the executive session, please.
Yes, Council met executive session on Friday, June 5th, 2020 via Zoom at 11:00 a.m. to discuss matters related to litigation. That executive session was from 11:00 a.m. to approximately 12:40.
Thank you. Recognition, Sermon, Proclamations, we have none for this meeting. Additions or deletions to the voting session agenda. There are none who have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Some moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith makes the motion. Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second.
Second, Ms. Radal. All favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carried. Moving down to the two other motions below that, these are two motions we've been having since the pandemic and in regards to our bylaws. So, Ms. Houck, do you want to make that first motion?
Yes, some moved.
Second, Walter.
Okay, Mr. Griffith. All favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Second motion again deals with the bylaws and conduct of our meetings through the Teams platform. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Ms. Radal?
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? On the question, all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. We're now open for public comment on the voting session agenda items. Please announce yourself when you come on, please. Members of the public?
Mr. McGinley, this is Mark. Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo of Hazleton speaking.
Go ahead, you have the podium.
I have only one procedural question that is pertaining to the agenda that you just voted on with regards to the conduct of public meetings that, you know, for online. I want to ask the solicitors for their opinion on that if there's a continuation, if they heard of any, if they had any guidance or heard of anything pertaining to the future conduct of meetings through the Office of Open Records.
If they gave any guidance? Mr. Raybo, that's not part of the agenda, can ask that at the end when we go to public comment at the end, that'd be fine. Agenda items.
That's a procedural question, yeah, it's a procedural question about the agenda, so that's why I'm asking now.
No, we can ask that at the end. Anyone else?
Well, unbelievable.
Anyone else? All right, no other public comments, we're down to the motion to approve amendments for May 26th. Do we have a motion?
Presented.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry? On the question. All favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No.
Mr. Urban? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Moving over to the second page. Motion to adopt the resolution in support of Luzerne County Flood Protection Authority grant application.
Old business, Mr. McGinley.
Excuse me?
I have old business.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's my fault, go ahead.
No problem. I'll have old business, most of my old business is emails that I sent that I don't get answers to, so I'll bring them to council meetings when I have council meetings. Oath of office, I asked this at the last meeting, wondering if that's gotten finally resolved so I could get that off my list. Apparently it has not, from what I saw on the prethonitaries page. The second question is for the manager.
Are you asking about whether they've been filed, am I correct?
Yeah, yeah, well, they've been filed separately as they're supposed to be.
Okay, go ahead.
I can answer, some of them have, Councilman Griffith, some of them have not. I've been compiling the list, I was going to give you the whole list as one document if you want them as we're, as I'm retrieving them from the prethonitaries office.
That'd be fine.
I think, you want them as I'm retrieving them, and then I can give you the number that it's filed under, so I'll start doing that, I was just trying to compile them all at once, but.
Now, Ms. Corkamal?
I'll send what I have via email.
Okay.
That's great, that's great. Okay, that takes care of that one. The other two, one, the one I asked the last meeting was, there was a contract for the printing of ballots and applications that was not bid, and I was wondering what the reason why those contracts were not bid for the Bureau of Elections. They are required to be bid, and they were not. And I sent an email regarding that and didn't get an answer for either of those, the one was, why was the contract not bid for ballot printing, and the other one was, why was Dominion, or what was Dominion's charge for the ballots that we're supposed to get reimbursed for? If we can get an answer from the manager on those two questions.
Okay, and what's the?
The next question is, why was there contracts awarded for the cleaning of the polling places, I saw there was an RFP, but I don't see any contracts. I questioned the RFP process last meeting, was told that they had to be cleaned special because of the COVID-19 virus, so I was wondering if we did award that contract. On 6-1, I sent an email to the manager about asset forfeiture information, received no response. Email on 6-1 about the River Commons, the $200,000 for fixing the granite, wanted to know what the provisions are to make sure that that damage isn't done in the future so we don't continually have to repair those items on the riverfront. And the last one was the email regarding the Verizon phone bill for Elections Bureau, I wanted to get a copy of the actual bill for those items that we paid $409 for. So if I could get an answer to any of those questions, that'd be great.
Mr. McGinley, it's Brian, I can take one of those.
Which one, Brian?
The last one, the Verizon bill, I thought the manager had sent Mr. Griffith the copy, if not, we can get the email over, we have the latest Verizon bill, I thought it was already sent, but if it's not, I can make sure that gets over to you.
Yeah, that'd be fine, no, I didn't get that.
Brian, you're going to send that out?
Yep, I'll send it.
Thank you. Is Mr. Pedrian, he was having some troubles at the start of the meeting. Doesn't appear that he's on right now, I'll.
I'll reserve him.
Mr. Griffith, could you, I just want to make a list because I'll be, I will look into the contract issues for you, so you have the contract for the cleaning.
Right. Of the polls.
Of the polling places.
Right.
And.
Was there one awarded there, or no?
Okay, no, I'm going to check, I'm going to check and get that for you, and then there was the bid process for the mail-in ballots, is that what you're?
Yeah, the mail-in ballots and the applications.
Okay.
And the, what was the charge for Dominion for the ballots that they, they, they messed up the instructions on, and we were supposed to go to Dominion to get reimbursed for that charge?
Okay, okay, amount for the instruction error.
Correct, correct, and then the asset forfeiture email I sent to the manager about, you know, the district attorney, I know some of that stuff is privileged information, but the total numbers, I think we can get that information, that would be great. And the last one was the River Commons, and I know we awarded a contract or we're in the process of, for $200,000 for somebody to fix the cracked granite and some other items over there at the Riverfront Park, but my concern is, you know, we obviously have an issue with skateboarders and things like that going on over there, I just wanted to know if the city has provisions in place that they watch that, or they videotape that so we can go after people who actually damaged that to recoup some of that cost.
I actually think, Mr. Griffith, on that contract, that was, remember when we had that big ice jam? Some of the granite blocks got moved, and I think that was part of that contract.
Right, right.
That was reset, okay?
I think that's true, yep.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I have that.
All right, very good, thank you so much.
Okay.
All right. Now let's turn to page and go over to the other side. This is a resolution in support of Luzerne County Flood Protection Authority for the grant application in regards to the Accelerated Levy System Evaluation Project. There is no monetary involvement here from the county, it's just a letter of support.
Correct.
Do we have a motion?
Presented.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Second, Sheila.
Okay, Ms. Sigmund, on the question. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radal?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Okay, moving down to number two. Resolution to clear a vacancy on the Luzerne County Board of Elections and Registration, I sent you the email I received last week from Mr. Thomas. In his regard in his email, he vacated his position as the Chair of the Elections and Registration Board. Do we have a motion to accept that resignation?
Motion.
Who was that?
Urban.
Mr. Urban, do we have a second, please?
Second, Walter.
We'll have, we'll put Linda's name down, okay?
That's fine.
Second. On the question. And as you know, the Chairman of the Elections Board and Registration is chosen by the other four members, the County Council does not get involved in that position per the charter. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radal?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, thank you. Moving down to number three, motion to adopt a resolution appointing a County Council member or members to the County Cares Commission. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Sheila, do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair Haas.
Okay, Mr. Haas. Before we get to that point, I'd like to have Mr. Vog give us an update on the County Cares Commission. Mr. Vog?
Yeah, so I formally written the, or I should say informally written the bylaws. We're going to look for three council members and six members of the public, we'll vote on the council members tonight, and then the public will go through the ABC interview session where all of council could then approve or deny the six based on popular vote. Once we get into the committee, the committee will then approve or change the bylaws according to how they see fit. But thank you for the support.
Okay, so what you're saying is there'll be three council members who would be part of that committee, correct?
Yes, correct.
Six members of the public at large?
Yes, chosen through the ABC committee.
Yep, they'll go through the ABC process and the interview process and be part of the eligibility list when they do that, okay?
Correct.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Vog?
I do, Mr. McGinley, on the bylaws. The only thing I would like to get is the purpose and maybe a mission statement on the County Cares Commission, and what its intended purpose is, I think it may have been in our original ordinance, but if you could incorporate that language into the cares bylaws, and I know this is a work in progress for Matt, and if you could get that in there, that would probably enhance this document a little bit for future council members that may have to look at this document.
I agree, I think that, I'm not thinking of Mr. Vog, but I think the process should be, once they get their committee together, their commission together, they should formalize the bylaws and send it back to County Council for approval, and then those items that we believe should be part of the bylaws can be talked about and discussed. Mr. Vog, do you have any comment about that?
No, I completely agree, I think it should be all of council who approves, a majority of council approve the bylaws, I just rough drafted them just to get through the process.
Yeah, just so I get a starting point.
Yes, thank you.
Very good. So, do we have a motion? Do we want to go into the nominations?
Should we make a motion to accept the bylaws first, Mr. McGinley, or no?
I don't think we can accept them at this point because the, that group, the County Cares Commission has not met and discussed the bylaws and then brought them forward, will have the bylaws come back to us, and at that point will provide the approval based on County Council.
Okay.
So, I don't believe it's necessary at this time, but we will have the bylaws come back to County Council. But in order to try to get this started, I think, Mr. Vog, I don't want to speak for you, if you have comments, please chime in. If we get the three council people together tonight, we have an ABC session scheduled for next Tuesday, correct, Mr. Perry?
That's correct.
So, as you can see, the next item on the agenda is to approve a new application with the County Cares Commission as part of that. So, those people will have an opportunity next Tuesday to go through and do the interview, get on the eligibility list. I know Ms. Lawrence has the news advertisement ready to go out tomorrow morning that will advertise the new application and also other openings that we may have at the ABCs, so that we'll have that going forward, and that'll be in the paper probably Friday or Sunday, and then hopefully we get some candidates on Tuesday, and then on the 23rd, hopefully we can point some people to try to round out that committee.
Okay.
Okay, that's the tentative scenario.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Just a question from a legal standpoint.
Go ahead.
You know, like, I know the original ordinance passed to create the commission, but there was no set number of members stated in the actual ordinance.
Right.
And so technically by nominating three people tonight, it's sort of like just an ad hoc at this point, because, you know, the membership could also change the number of members to seven or five if they so choose.
Right.
Yeah, that's correct.
So I'm thinking maybe like our ordinance should have originally stated how many members were a part of, or assigned to that commission initially, only to cover ourselves legally.
Well, and I think, you know, obviously we possibly could have done that at that time, we did not, but when we get the bylaws, we can have that stipulation in the bylaws as far as the membership, so we can make sure we go one way or the other, whether it be seven, or nine, or five, or 11, whatever the bylaws come back with, and whether, whatever council approves.
Yeah, I think, you know, just going forward, if we do create an ABC or something like that, maybe should stipulate in the ordinance upfront, you know, to sort of preload it, and then obviously they can change it and then come back to council for an adjustment.
Okay.
Mr. McGinley?
Who's, who, there's two people.
Sheila.
Sheila, first.
Yes, when you say three members, Matt is definitely one of them, isn't he?
He would have to be confirmed by council right now.
Okay.
Right now, there's no members on that committee.
Okay.
Who was the other person who spoke with him?
It was Linda, I was just going to say that we did create the Recreational Facilities Committee several years ago, and that is what we did, I mean, what Mr. Urban suggested is what we did then, we did define what the committee was when we started and then went from there, so I do think that would be a good practice, but let's move on with this.
Yes, I think we've been, it's time that we start to get moving on this. So, do we have a motion?
Some moved, Leanne McDermott.
Okay, McDermott, are you going to, I think the proper way, Ms. McDermott, would be that you would nominate someone. We'll have a motion to open up nominations.
Some moved, Walter.
Okay, Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second.
Who was second, Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Okay, all favor opening nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard? Nomination is open, Ms. McDermott, you want to nominate someone?
I'd like to nominate Matt Vog.
Matt? Very good, do we have a second for Ms. McDermott?
Second.
Second, Linda.
Okay, Ms. Houck?
I nominate Steve Urban, Walter.
Mr. Urban? Can you catch up with this, please? Mr. Griffith made the motion, do we have a second for that?
Second, Linda.
Ms. Houck? Do we have a, any more nominations, we only have two so far.
I nominate Ms. Radal.
All right, Ms. Radal? And that is Mr. Snee, and do we have a second for Mr. Snee? Mr. Urban? Correct? Any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
I think there's one more nomination, excuse me, who nominated somebody, please repeat that?
Motion to nominate Chris Perry, Kendra, sorry, Sheila.
That's okay, I was going to do the same thing.
Chris Perry, Ms. Radal, and Ms. Sigmund, are you the second on that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. We now have four.
Motion to close nominations, Mr. Chair.
Who's that, Mr. Haas?
Oh, Haas, yes.
Yeah, who's second on that?
I'll second it, Walter.
Okay, all favor closing nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. We now have three people nominated, we're looking at three, we have four people nominated, excuse me, and we're looking at three people serving on that committee, the County Cares Commission. Okay, we'll do one at a time, we'll start with Mr. Vog, who was nominated first. And, Ms. Houck, we should do this individually, correct?
Well, you're going to fill the seats individually, so I believe what you would want to do is take the first seat and go around and take one name for the first seat.
Yeah, that's what I thought, we'd start with Mr. Vog, go around.
Well, no, no, start with the seat and have everybody name the one name, not three names, one name for that seat.
And one more point of order, the term, like the length of term?
Yes, I think, Mr. Urban, that will come back with your bylaws also, but I spoke with Mr. Vog, Mr. Vog, you want to chime in? Try to match it up to the terms of County Council, so you would have, always have some kind of rotations, so you don't have everyone coming off or everybody going on at the same time, okay?
Yeah, we kind of have to see who is nominated first because of, I mean, there's election next year.
Right. All right, so we're talking about the first seat, we'll go around, all 11 will have an opportunity to nominate one of the four, Mr. Vog, Mr. Urban, Ms. Radal, Mr. Perry.
Do we designate the term, the one year or a two-year, or no?
If the bylaws come back, we'll do that.
Okay.
We don't have some of that detail at this point because we don't have the bylaws, but we'll try to match, we will match it up to terms for County Council, so you don't have people, like I said, all, everybody off at one time, everybody back at one time, okay?
Yeah.
All right, so, Ms. Lawrence, go around, the roll call, and you'll give us one name.
Ms. Houck?
Vog.
Ms. McDermott?
Matthew Vog.
Mr. Perry?
Matt Vog.
Ms. Radal?
Matt Vog.
Ms. Sedman?
Matt Vog.
Mr. Snee?
Vog.
Mr. Urban?
Vog.
Mr. Vog?
Perry.
Mr. Griffith?
Urban.
Mr. Haas?
Mr. Vog.
Mr. McGinley?
Mr. Vog.
We have nine for Vog, one for Urban, and one for Perry.
Okay, so Mr. Vog is in the first spot, we're going to go to the second. Again, we'll roll call, and you will indicate, now we have three people left at this point, Mr. Urban, Ms. Radal, Mr. Perry. Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
Kendra Radal.
Mr. Perry?
Kendra Radal.
Ms. Radal?
Kendra Radal.
Ms. Sedman?
Kendra.
Mr. Snee?
Ms. Radal.
Mr. Urban?
Radal.
Mr. Vog?
Radal.
Mr. Griffith?
Urban.
Mr. Haas?
Radal.
Ms. Houck?
Radal.
Mr. McGinley?
Radal.
Ten for Radal, one for Urban.
Okay, and now we're going to the third position, and we have two names left at this time, Mr. Urban and Mr. Perry, roll call, please, just provide one of those two names, Mr. Urban or Mr. Perry.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Urban.
Ms. Radal?
Mr. Perry.
Ms. Sedman?
Mr. Perry.
Mr. Snee?
Mr. Perry.
Mr. Urban?
Urban.
Mr. Vog?
Mr. Perry.
Mr. Griffith?
Urban.
Mr. Haas?
Mr. Urban.
Ms. Houck?
Mr. Urban.
Ms. McDermott?
Mr. Perry.
Mr. McGinley?
Mr. Perry.
Six for Perry, five for Urban.
Okay, so we have the three members, Mr. Vog, Ms. Radal, Mr. Perry. Moving down to item number four.
Do we need to vote for a resolution for each one to adopt the resolution?
Yes.
Yep, we should, you're correct, Ms. Lawrence. So we have a motion to adopt the resolution appointing Mr. Vog to the County Cares Commission. Do we have a motion?
Some moved, Kendra.
Ms. Radal, do we have a second?
Second, Sheila.
Okay. On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Radal?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Moving down to the second item, Ms. Radal, you need a motion appointing Ms. Radal to the County Cares Commission, do we have a motion?
Presented.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second? Mr. Sneed, do we have a second?
Second.
Sheila? On the question? Roll call on the resolution to appoint Ms. Radl.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneed?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radl?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Okay, in the third position, we need a resolution to appoint Mr. Chris Perry to the County Cares Commission. Do we have a motion?
Presented.
Mr. Sneed, do we have a second?
Sheila.
Ms. Saban?
Yes.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Ms. Dushney?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radl?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you. Now we're down to number four. Uh, as you all know, we have an ABC application that was approved many years ago by county council. With the addition of the County Cares Commission, uh, the application has to be updated. And that's why it's on the agenda for this evening to have a motion to approve the new application with the County Cares Commission.
Presented, McDermott.
McDermott, do we have a second?
Second, Perry.
Very good. On the question? This is just a motion to approve the ABC application. Roll, we don't need roll call. Your voice will, all in favor of approving the application is presented indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Now we're down to public, uh, agenda items, non-agenda items. Mr. Raabo? Mr. Raabo?
I have to unmute the bridge real quick. We've been getting a lot of noise here. Let me unmute that side. Um, we're getting some noise from the phone, I believe.
Thank you. Let us know when it's open, Jared, please.
You are no longer muted.
It should be open right now.
Should be open now. Mr. Raabo, go ahead.
Yes, uh, Mr. McKinley, uh, my question is, uh, I've heard that, um, uh, that there has been guidance given by the Office of Open Records with pertaining to, uh, the re-resurgence or re-reinstillation of live meetings, uh, for public entities. And I wa, was wondering if the solicitors had any, uh, you know, got, received any guidance from the Office of Op, State Office of Open Records with regards to resumption of, uh, live meetings.
Uh, Mr. DeLuca?
Yeah, um, see, the, the last, uh, guidance, uh, that I saw was, I believe, uh, May 5th. You know, I, the guidance indicated that while the emergency, uh, the governor's emergency order is continuing, uh, that the, uh, that Act 15, uh, the, uh, rules regarding public meetings and public participation, uh, that was provided in Act 15, it continue, uh, in effect. We had discussions about this before. I, I don't know what this is gonna look like once the dust settles there. Um, I truly believe that until there's some sort of vaccine, um, that, that will, there will be legitimate concerns, not only by members of the public, but also public officials, uh, about how, um, how public meetings are conducted, so. Um, we don't want to speculate. Ramilda and I had had discussions about this, uh, many discussions about this over the last two months. We don't want to speculate on what the legislature and for the Office of Open Records will recommend regarding uh, resumption of, uh, of public meetings as we knew them. Um, so at this point, the latest guidance that we have, I believe, is, uh, is May 5th. I do know some of the other municipal entities that I represent, some of their, um, uh, organizations, uh, they have given out some guidance, uh, on, um, on public, uh, meetings. That was not specifically the County Commissioners Association, uh, but, um, I have nothing else from the Office of Open Records.
Mr. DeLuca, there's, uh, currently, as we're speaking, the state senate is, uh, having their, uh, debate before the vote on, uh, the elimination of the governor's declaration order, the re, resolution to, uh, end the governor's, uh, dec, emergency declaration order as per title 35, uh, 5701. So I was, uh, wondering if that, uh, passes the senate and, uh, the concurrent resolution is adopted, uh, that means the end of the emergency re, uh, declaration. So that would mean, uh, by your, by your, uh, opinion, there would be resumption of, uh, public meetings as per, uh, the way it was before as, well, not as it was before, but with CDC guidelines in place. Would that be?
No, that's not what I said. Uh, I think you're putting, uh, words in my mouth. I absolutely did not say that. Um, I.
No, I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying you're saying that, but I'm just saying that. No, I'm not saying you're saying that, Mr. DeLuca. I'm just saying that if that, uh, uh, emergency re, uh, declarations ended, then that wouldn't that mean, uh, a resumption of, uh, you know, public meetings as per the CDC guideline, with the CDC guidelines in place? Wouldn't that be, uh, your opinion?
First, you're asking us to speculate, which we don't, we, we wouldn't even want to do that for county council members who we work for, um, let alone, uh, the public. Um, so at this point, uh, I would have no opinion, uh, as to what may happen if something else may happen. Uh, like I said, uh, this is a situation where, um, I mean, title 35 would still possibly, uh, be in effect because of a county declaration of emergency, so. Um, Ramilda and I and the staff, uh, when, if and when there's any legislative action or any other guidance from the Office of Open Records, uh, we'll sit down, we'll analyze it considering, uh, all the possibilities and, uh, and then advise council and the county manager, um, based on, on what our opinion is, based on whatever's presented to us. But to, for us to speculate what's gonna happen or if and when we're ever going to be, uh, in the same room again when we're conducting public business, uh, I have absolutely no idea and, and, uh, and I will not speculate.
Well, Hazleton City Council, Mr. DeLuca, Hazleton City Council tomorrow is going to have their meetings. Uh, well, the administration and the coun, uh, majority council members are gonna be in their chambers, uh, live and, uh, but the public is going to be watching through via Zoom. So I don't know, because they were told, their solicitor was told that by their, by the Office of Open Records, that they would have, uh, you know, it would be under their purview, uh, you know, uh, under the local government and entities' purview at this point to conduct meetings. So that's why I'm asking the question from you as far as what you received as guidance from the Office of Open Records. That's why I'm asking.
Great, thank you. Open records will defer to local, to, to, uh, solicitor's office uh, to determine, uh, it doesn't matter whether it's a, a county government or townships or boroughs or cities, uh, the Office of Open Records may issue guidance, uh, but that guidance is not necessarily binding on, on the, uh, municipalities. The municipalities have their own legal counsel. Their legal counsel evaluates what the law says.
I understand, Mr. DeLuca.
Okay.
I understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other members of the public? Other members of the.
Brian Shiner, Kingston.
Speak up there, Mr. Shiner. Go ahead.
Brian Shiner, Kingston.
Go ahead.
It was stated at the beginning of the meeting. It was stated at the beginning of the meeting, there was a, uh, an executive session.
Correct.
For pending litigation.
Uh, I think what he says is litigation matters, but litigation was definitely mentioned.
Yes, uh, the sunshine law requires that the actual case name be stated. Would you please state the case name?
Mr. DeLuca?
Uh, I, the case was related to, uh, it was prison litigation, um, and, uh, I don't have the, uh, uh, Ramilda, could you, do you have the actual, um, the actual site? The caption?
The caption, uh, is Mackey versus, uh, Luzern County Correction Facility.
Thank you. So this is the issue that was, uh, yes, this is the issue that was reported in the paper, uh, the other day. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in the public? Jared, does it look like anybody else is on the line?
Yeah, there's one person who's muted. Um, I don't know if they're trying to talk. It's star six to unmute and mute on the phone. So if you're not able to be heard, it's.
Speak up.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Uh, this is Ron Knapp.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, thank you for, uh, recognizing me. Um, as you stated earlier about, um, difficulty with Manager Pedri, uh, getting through, uh, for this conference we're having. Um, as well, uh, I tried to input some information on, on the previous, uh, public comments, but I was unable to get through myself. Uh, so that would lead me to ask, uh, why, why are we using this mode of, of communication technologically when there's Zoom, what Zoom is being utilized for many a different, uh, uh, communication, and it's a less, um, uh, problematic system, uh, where we can all see each other when we speak. And I think that we're all responsible enough not to speak when not spoken to. Um, I think that that would nullify a lot of these, uh, technical difficulties that obviously even you yourself stated, uh, in the beginning of the meeting, there are difficulties with techno, uh, technology, uh, uh, with, with us conferencing like that through this me, these means. So I, I would suggest go Zoom. That's by, just my opinion. Now, the second thing I wanted to ask about is, um, about the levee system up in 44, what Luzern County is responsible for, correct?
Well, no, the Luzern County Flood Protection Authority is responsible for that.
Okay, um, is there any way that I could just input that, you know, because everybody, uh, is not able to get out or, um, you know, the need for exercise because of COVID-19 and getting out and being able to get in the fresh air and such, uh, the stretch of, and up in the 44th end, uh, by the airport, um, it's two point and a quarter mile long. And, um, you have all walks of life, uh, different age brackets, old, young, mothers with children. And, and believe it or not, there's hundreds of people that use that area. Well, in, uh, seasons past, the soccer field would have, uh, soccer tournaments with, uh, the children and the parents, which would provide job johnnies, uh, down on that, those fields. Well, because of the COVID-19 issue, uh, job johnnies aren't available. And, and my, my concern is for hygienics, uh, for the public. Um, I think that, that the county should step up and at least provide one job Johnny, uh, regularly from Memorial Day through Labor Day for the sake of, um, public decency. Uh, that's an embarrassing subs to bring up, but, you know, people, people, humans are humans, and, uh, I think it would be appropriate for the county to supply a, a job Johnny up on that end. That's, that's just my opinion. Uh, well, that's, that pretty much sums up what I had to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You are.
Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? Okay, uh, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Walter moved.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radl? On the question, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. We're gonna move right to the work session, please. We already have, uh, completed the budget releases moment of silence. We'll have a roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Howke?
Here.
Ms. McDermott? Ms. McDermott?
I'd be muted. Go ahead.
Mr. McKinley?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radl?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Sneed? Mr. Sneed?
Mr. Sneed, you're muted. Please unmute. Go ahead.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Present.
Mr. Sneed's present. Ms. McDermott?
McDermott's present.
Very good.
Okay, all present.
Thank you. Uh, deletions or additions to the agenda?
One addition, Mr. Chair, Harry Haas.
Go ahead, Mr. Haas.
I would like a discussion for the termination of the emergency declaration.
Which, which declaration you're speaking about, Mr. Haas?
The emergency declaration. We see from Mr. Pedri, it was dated June 8th.
County declaration?
Yes.
All right, we'll put that under the county manager. Emergency declaration.
Uh, Mr. McKinley, I have a couple to add, if I could.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Um, I want to discuss the issue of meeting in public under the work session and how we can go about making that.
County council then? Uh, be like number seven or something?
Okay.
Public meetings?
Yep, public meetings. Um, I'd also like to talk about, uh, budget amendments by council for regarding the COVID-19 emergency. Any fundings that we get should be done by emergency, uh, or by a budget amendment to properly put them in the revenue stream and put the expenditures out. Like to speak of, talk, have a little bit of a discussion about the procedure on, we got the, uh, the manager sent an email, said to talk about the $26.5 million COVID funding. I think he said we should discuss that as a council. So we need to probably put that on the agenda to speak about. I'd like to also talk about the co, council codification, getting the RFP out. Get the RFP out for that. Um, and the, let's see, um, I guess the bylaws amendment, we could discuss that under code review committee. Um, but the manager, the manager evaluation, I don't know if that's something we should put on the work session to discuss or not, but we should probably get busy with that manager evaluation for the year.
Yeah, that'll be coming up in another month.
Yep, yep. So do we have a, do you have a procedure for that for the newer folks to run council?
Uh, when we get there, uh, which will be another month, we'll, we'll go over that to make sure everybody has that information.
Okay. What's, what's the deadline for that, Mr. McKinley?
We normally do that in June. Late June and get it back in July or so.
Okay, okay.
Sometimes it takes a little while for everybody to get their information back, uh, but that's when we normally do it.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, I think I got those all, public meeting, budget amendments regarding the virus and codification, correct?
Yep.
Good.
Mr. McKinley, Urban?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Urban.
Uh, number three, I need to correct some spelling in there where it says to execute. Yeah, execute a lease agreement.
Yeah, it doesn't have a need, right?
Right.
Okay.
Um, I also want to maybe just briefly discuss, um, ABC terms that we might need, you know, to try to correct them, and then, uh, you know, the 44th Airport Advisory Board.
Yeah, the ABC terms, that should go to the ABC Committee. And Mr. Perry's going to have a meeting next Tuesday. So if you have thoughts or concerns about that, Mr. Urban, send that to Mr. Perry, please.
Okay.
Okay. I wrote down the other one. Anybody else? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the additions that were mentioned?
So moved, Walter.
Okay. Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Yes, Sheila.
Segment. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. You do have a copy of the monthly division reports in your packet. Mr. Pedri, are you, I see his icon.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Just for the record, I only missed the first couple minutes of the meeting. It wasn't, it wasn't issue with Zoom. It was an issue with, I tried loading it on my iPad. And that was my fault. And then I, and then I had to download the correct version of it and then I just switched over to my other computer. So that was more my fault than the platform's fault.
Okay.
But I was, I was here for most of the meeting, the last meeting. So the division reports are in front of you. Obviously, for May's been a significant month in the county. We are now in the process of reopening. I think that the sheriff has done a really terrific job on the reopening plan. The last two days, we've now been reopening for a criminal court. And I look forward to the days when we have no restrictions in the courthouse. But as of right now, things have been going very, very well. They, people are waiting outside in a tent. That, and this is for social distancing. There's been a small number of people in that tent and that, obviously, the people in the tent are spread out pretty far away from each other. Mostly because we have a large number of PFAs. As I talked about in the last meeting, we've had more PFAs than ever filed in the past couple of months. And so now the judges are hearing all of those. Every judge is taking a couple of PFAs, so they're splitting up all the work and, you know, the courts are working really hard on those things. But our sheriff's doing a phenomenal job. I have to give it to the, I have to give credit to so many different people in the county for what they've done here. But let me take this opportunity to specifically highlight Mr. Sumsky and his team at the Sheriff's Department. First off, they were key in closing of the courthouse and doing things safely and working on a new plan. And then they were assigned to assist at the testing site. And then as soon as the testing site was over, obviously, we are now, you know, working with the reopening of the plan and providing support to our police officers as always. They've been doing a phenomenal job and that's just one department. So I want to give all the credit to Mr. Sumsky. And we'll move forward from there. If anybody has any questions, we'll be happy to take them now.
Any questions for Mr. Pedri, please?
No, Dave, this is Paul Heimars from the courts. I just wanted to second the outstanding job that the Sheriff's Department, as well as the county engineers have done as far as the signage. The Sheriff's Department has been extremely cooperative with the courts. And the first few days for us have gone extremely smooth in large part to their efforts.
Okay. Anybody from the council has questions for Mr. Pedri?
I do, Mr. McKinley.
Go ahead.
I understand it and correct me if I'm incorrect on this, Mr. Pedri, was there damage done to the courthouse due to the protest?
We, we had during the one, the first protest, there was a juvenile who utilized a magic marker on the side of the courthouse. It was quickly removed by our building and grounds crew and there's no permanent damage.
That was the only incident, then?
That's the only incident.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much for clarifying.
Yeah, so we were, I mean, we're, I mean, listen, honestly, like, the people have been protesting. All of them have been peaceful and respecting of our property. Hopefully, that maintains. I don't see a reason why it wouldn't. But, you know, that was the only incident. It was a juvenile and it was quickly cleaned and then no permanent damage to the courthouse.
Perfect. And then the other question I have is probably for Brian, but maybe if you could answer this one as well. Have we gotten the airport audit for the June 5th deadline?
That's a Brian question.
Mr. Swets?
Yeah, I could take that one. No, we did not have it. We don't even have a draft audit at this time. They're working on a draft. From our prior conversation with Mr. Johns, that would not hold up the audit. I do realize that that was the deadline to absolutely make the 30th. But when we talked at our last audit committee meeting and before that, Mr. Johns said the worst thing that would happen was it would be unaudit and be marked in a footnote. But as of the 5th and as of the end of the day today, I had no draft from the airport.
And that's a concern because we have members who sit on that airport board. And we constantly have the same problem every year. Is there, we had the same problem last year, didn't we?
No, no, we did not, Mr. Griffith. And we haven't had that problem in the previous.
Not with the airport. No, we haven't had a problem with the airport until this year.
Okay, so I misspoke there. I apologize. So did we, is there a reason why the airport is not getting their work to us on time? Or from the members of the board that sit on that airport board?
I questioned that at our last meeting, Mr. Griffith, actually prior to the meeting to see where that was. And there was an issue with the auditor and that's why the holdup was occurring. They said that they would push the auditor to get it done.
Do they have a new auditor issue, Mr. McKinley, or is it the same one?
I can't, I don't, I don't know. I don't, I can't tell you that. I assume it's the same person, but I can't verify that.
Okay. I mean, I keep going back to Joan Putziteri when she used to say January 1st comes the same time every year. So I'm kind of concerned that, you know, we seem to have this problem at the deadline part and everybody's, you know, and obviously it's at the airport's problem last year, but we had problems last year as well. So, okay, that clarifies that.
I think a lot of those problems from last year have been cleaned up and, Mr. Swets, am I correct that you have the materials that you need at this point for the auditor to move forward?
Yes, we're moving forward. We had a conversation with the auditors today. In general rule, we speak Tuesday and Friday. Sometimes that does change, but it's at least twice a week. There's nothing that's going to hold up the report being issued at this time. They're doing some work. They're getting the drafts done. They're waiting on the final report from Domestic Relations. We got a draft report. But we're working on drafting the audit and getting the MDNA ready with the reports we have. And at this point, there's no concern that we're going to be late. So it's just really staying on Domestic Relations, which is in process.
Yeah. And as long as, as long as Mr. Swets is there, did we get our 1.8 million yet from the state? Or are they still waiting for their loan on the election machine issue?
I did not see it, Mr. Griffith.
Okay, I know we did get the 343,000, right?
Yes, we got that very, like, this week or last week. It wasn't too long ago. Yes, we got the 343,000.
I think Mr. Swetson will email out whenever that arrives.
Yeah, I think they're waiting for the state to get through with their processing their loan first before they can send it out to everybody else. So I think that might be the delay. So, all right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Anybody else?
Mr. McKinley, it's Sheila.
Yes, Mr..
And I, as long as we're talking about different departments and it was the county manager's turn, I really want to give credos to the county manager and the Bureau of Elections because from the emails and from the phone calls I received, people were very happy, thought it ran very smoothly. And I think that's a credit to everybody considering what we had to do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. McKinley, I didn't, I have that written down here and I appreciate Sheila reminding me of the, there were some problems and overall, obviously, from the amount of work that they had to do. I certainly think that they, you know, it could have been a whole lot worse. Let me just say that. I mean, basically with that many mail-in ballots and all the work that was being done by hand, I mean, the room for error was huge. So I think we really missed a lot of spots along the way. But there were some concerns and I know Mr. Urban sent an email in asking for a couple of public hearings possibly we could have earlier, sooner rather than later for to address those.
And when the results are certified and the process is complete, then we'll look to do that.
Okay.
Else?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in here. And yes, I did ask for that public hearing just for the record, you know, and it would be after the certification of the election, just to go over what I've witnessed. It may have been smooth in some areas, but definitely not smooth where I was and the feedback that I received from those workers. So we will talk about that in a future date. And I can tell you for a fact, my own father got the wrong ballot in the mail as well. So.
Very good. Anyone else on the division reports?
Okay. Chair, is this appropriate time to talk about emergency status?
No, we have that listed after the capital plan, Mr. Haas.
Very good.
All right. Yep, sure. Moving down to number two, the magistrate lease at Kingston Borough. Mr. Heimars, you're on the call, please, or you're on the meeting?
Yes, I'm here, Mr. McKinley.
Okay, they have a handout of the information. Do you want to speak to that, please?
The courts are looking to extend or perhaps renew the lease at the Kingston Borough Building. We've been a longtime tenant there. The current lease expired in December of 2015. And it is our intention to renew that lease for an initial two-year term with some additional one-year options after the end of that two years.
Question for Mr. Heimars?
Yes, Mr. McKinley. Mr. Heimars, could you, what was the rent prior to the new lease agreement that we're going to discuss this evening?
The rent prior was $1,000, Mr. Griffith.
So they doubled the rent?
Yes, they have made significant improvements in the facilities, upstairs, new flooring. They rearranged the judicial courtroom. They've also made significant security enhancements, bullet-resistant glass at the transaction window, as well as secure steel doors for the staff area and the judicial chambers. So they've made significant improvements in the facility in order for us to remain in that location.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the follow-up questions on that is, is this lease expired since 2015? And I don't know if there was no spreadsheet or no information regarding this particular one, because this was like five years ago. So I would certainly hope that we would be more on top of leases that are expiring rather than waiting five years before we renew. But in the future, if we could get a copy of the prior lease, so we have some kind of guide to go with so we could see any changes that may have occurred in the, in the new lease that we're going to have to vote on, that would be very helpful for myself.
Okay, that would not be a problem. We can work with the Office of Law to do that.
Yeah, are there other, I'm sorry.
We'll have that. We'll provide the other lease. And I do want to advise council that we took the project on and we do have an Excel spreadsheet of all the leases that we are involved in, which also gives the date of termination and renewal date. And hopefully, once we get the e-contract management system up and running, we'll be able to have notifications given to us on the calendar. So we'll be updated that way as well.
Okay, and as long as Mr. Pedri's on the phone, could he answer that question about that? We're talking about contracts for the cleaning the polling places?
The polling places, and I'll defer to Mr. O'Neal on this. There were two. Belfour and Old Time Cleaning. Work began cleaning poll locations on Friday by Old Time and yesterday by Belfour. All work should be completed by the end of the week.
Do you have a copy, do you have a copy of the contracts out there online, Mr. Pedri?
I haven't signed them yet, so they haven't been up. I'm assuming I should probably have them tomorrow.
Okay, all right, good enough. Thank you very much.
And with regards to the Levy Rehab Project, the contract was awarded to D and M. And most, most work being completed has little or nothing to do with the damage caused by the visitors. It's more of the molding and the, just the wear and tear, but nothing to do with like a person causing issues to it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. McKinley, thank you very much.
Moving down to number three. This is a discussion regards to resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzern County and Luzern County Domestic Relations. Mr. Heimars, is Mr. Kane on the line also?
I believe Mr. Kane is on the line.
Okay. Who's going to speak to it?
Kevin?
Mr. Kane, it's Ron. Do you have your microphone open?
I do, sir.
Okay, you want to speak to the lease that's being proposed?
The lease proposal is, was a prior 10-year lease that was renewed five years ago. The state asked us to suspend that lease and redo it based upon the cost allocation plan, which was part of the state guidelines. The prior lease was a $38,985 per month lease agreement. This lease is $33,788.25 per month based upon the cost allocation plan as relates to the cost of ownership for Luzern County as determined by the cap. It will be renewed and reviewable annually based upon the cost allocation plan. The state is in agreement with the numbers we've submitted to you. Once it is accepted, the manager and the president judge will sign it, will have approval by the state of Pennsylvania.
Questions for Mr. Kane? Any one? Very none. We're going down to number four.
Thank you.
You will see, capital plan will be on our work sessions as we go through the summer months. And in August, we'll have to make a decision about the capital plan. As you remember, the manager submitted the capital plan to us. It's now in the hands of the county council. And it's our responsibility to approve the plan prior to September 1. So if there's any discussions that you want in that regard, please let me know. If there's a certain item or items that you want to talk about, please let me know. We'll include those on the work sessions as we go through the next several months. Any questions in that regard? Very none. Mr. Haas, we're now down to the emergency declaration that you requested.
Yeah, emergency declaration. First of all, hats off to the managers. They've done a great job during this, during this period of our history here for the past three months. But my concern is that, you know, we, we are now meeting regularly with councils. I think that it's under the council's purview whether or not to continue such a declaration. And I want to know specifically, if we terminate that declaration, what, what could happen? You know, the email was ambiguous. It said we may not be able to get federal state funding. We may not get this, may not get that. You know, I asked this several meetings ago and we still don't have firm answers. And I think really to move the county forward, I think we would do a great service to try to move us into the green as soon as possible and even points after that. As I've said many times, our businesses are, some of them have now gone under. And a lot of people's livelihoods are getting ruined. And the governor is protesting shoulder-to-shoulder with people violating his own recommendations. So again, I think the people, at least the constituents I talked to, are very eager to have us use whatever tools we can to get us back on track. So I don't mean editorialize it, but the question is what, what is really in jeopardy if we terminate a declaration? And secondly, I think it's the council's purview at this point to discuss this at the very least before we issue such a declaration. So.
Mr. Pedri first and Ms. Crockermore are.
Yes.
Well, a couple of different things. I mean, Harry, per the, listen, I'm not going to get into it, but per the charter, the declaring of the declaration is purely in the county manager's purview. You know, I'm happy to discuss with county council. You know that, whatever, whatever the case would be. But, you know, I really, and I put in the email, I really struggled on whether or not I should, you know, extend this last one. But here's a situation for John Q. Public, for every single Luzern County citizen. Whether or not I declare an emergency or continue that emergency has really no effect on their lives. You know, the governor, Governor Wolf has, has the determination whether or not we move to the yellow or green. And, you know, there's a, there's a law going on, right, being debated right now in Harrisburg as to whether or not, you know, to continue with his emergency declaration. Honestly, look at our numbers. As I said in the, in the past, Luzern County has potentially one of the greatest stories of this COVID-19 virus, being fifth in the. stories of this COVID-19 virus, being fifth in the state only a couple, only a month ago. And now seeing those numbers drop precipitously to the point that we feel like we are safe and secure and that we've shown our responsibility. So I was about to raise the point to the lapse and have no, no issue with it. But I had a long conversation with Lucy Morgan, and because of the fact that she said, listen, this could potentially lose state and federal assistance, because they, they just simply are just, you know, marking off blocks as, as things move forward. So I'm like, okay, well, that can be something. In addition, I looked at the, at Governor Wolf's order yesterday, and my number one goal is to support small businesses here. So Governor's Wolf report from yesterday was that there is about over $200 million available now for small businesses. One of those factors that they come into place, whether or not there's a valid declaration of emergency. Well, does that go under his declaration of emergency, our declaration of emergency? I think you can tell the frustration in my voice in dealing with some of the state issues over these past couple of months with regard to, to the, to the, to the gray lines. So, listen, I'm, I, I think that we are definitely moving in the right direction in order to, to protect the county completely financially and to get as much as we possibly can. I'm erring on the side of caution here to, to, to keep us in the declaration of emergency until we hit the green phase. But, you know, it, that's purely just my, I don't want to miss out on an opportunity and say, you know, that could have been covered if you did this. And I don't want to list, I don't want to lose out on that. For the businesses, this is, this doesn't affect the businesses, for the, for the people going out into the community, doesn't affect them. For our little leagues, it doesn't affect them. It doesn't affect summer camps or anything along those lines. And I'm going to defer to this listener here for what the, the legal interpretation per the charter of, of the Luzerne County Declaration of Emergency.
Well, we, we have on previous occasions provided the interpretation as to the declaration of the state of emergency. That has not changed. Charter is clear. That is one thing that the charter is absolutely clear about. That's the authority of the county manager. Obviously, council can discuss it and, and provide suggestions to the county manager, but it is, according to the charter, the county manager's decision and under his authority. We did have discussions. They're reading some of the requirements of the federal and state potential funding. We, I can't specifically state that it is the governor's declaration of emergency that solely applies, or if it's the county as well. I just want to be clear, the county manager's authority, it deals with county operations and county buildings. The county manager and county council does not have control as to whether or not businesses can open or not. Having said that, this week was the first week that we began reopening with courts. I advised the county manager that, given that, it gives the county manager the authority to determine how, when, where individuals enter county buildings. Yesterday went really well. There were very, very few glitches today as well. There were opening up the building. The county manager has to have that authority to, to control who comes into the building, when and where. So on the advice of council, the county manager extended the state of emergency.
And like, and here's, I think, I think Ramella for, for, for the legal interpretation. But Harry, I mean, like, my, my position is really, does it hurt more that, I mean, like, extending, extending the declaration at this point for, you know, it looks like if we get out of the green in the next week or a week and a half or something along those, if you get into the green, does it, does it hurt anybody? And do I potentially risk, risk things that I don't need to be risking in order to make a political point? I'm not really interested in making a point. I just want to make sure that the county's protected. But I'm always open for suggestions if you guys want to talk about it.
Sure. And if I could, Dave, and you know what, I, I just, good leadership is equipping the staff. And, you know, my time on council, I've always done that, and I, I really feel the same. I've equipped you to do your job. And why I brought this up initially was not to, you know, make your life more difficult or for that for any of our staff members. But at the same time, you know, when, when the governor moved us into yellow, you know, the case has been made, it wasn't just because he was a benevolent guy. I mean, when he has lawsuits from across the state, when you have civil disobedience with elected officials and governments across the state, I would make the suggestion that that's probably what preempted him. Because we keep on seeing this whole process, a lot of this has been very arbitrary. And even with these, with the goalposts changing all the time, we still don't even know what's in jeopardy if we have an emergency declaration or not. I mean, that, that should be a number one, number one starting point. But we, we consistently have not got this from the state. And again, I want to make sure that we're doing whatever we can to protect our people and our lives and our businesses of Luzerne County. And if this moves the ball, I'm all for it. Again, with all reason and, and appropriate discussion points. That's why I really think going forward, we need to discuss things like this because we are regularly meeting, and we want to make sure that, that we're moving in the right direction.
I, I said, I mean, if the next meeting is going to be in, in two weeks, Mr. McGinnley?
Correct, 23rd.
I sincerely doubt I will be extending it into, by, by the time we meet again, I sincerely doubt we're, I will still can be continuing it, you know?
Yeah, if the point's moot, I don't want to waste our time either. But at the same time, people are really struggling. I don't, I don't, I don't understand why. It seems like this message is not making it to Harrisburg. But we've got some little problems here, and they're going to be long-term. And now, more than the virus, it seems like the governmental actions from the state are hurting more than they're curing. But again, thanks, Dave. Again, I'm here to support you and our staff. But at the same time, we, we don't want to keep on just, you know, pulling the blanket over our heads here. But thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Urban here.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Urban.
So, Mr. Pedri, when you're discussing like this with other people, are you reaching out to any of the state legislative members within our region or in our county to get a pulse on what, what they're feeling or thinking? And maybe to get, gain a sense of where, what their thought process is, you know? And, because I know, like, you know, today I was watching a little bit of the PA Senate live before our meeting. And it seems like most of the counties, I guess the intention is, is hopefully that every county goes green by the, I think the 19th is what I, I heard from one Democratic PA Senator state. But, you know, to gain a sense of, of really what's going on in Harrisburg. You know, you, ultimately, you are the county manager of Luzerne County. I, I know you could reach out to a lot of the legislative branch of government within our own caucus here and, and maybe get, gain a pulse of what's, in a bipartisan way of what's really going on. You know, I mean, like, I, I echo kind of Harry's sentiments that, that, you know, it is hurting small business. There's a lot of places that aren't opening, some that will never come back. You know, our people get, are getting crushed. And, and, you know, the fallout's going to happen at the county level afterwards. You know, we're going to have to deal, like I said, deal with mental health consequences, the PFA consequences. I mean, we're already dealing with some of those. You know, and I don't think we really even have a true picture of how many PFAs are really out there. I mean, I'd like to know some more, you know, factual numbers regarding all of that. But, you know, I mean, we, we really want to move the ball forward. Obviously, we all want to do it in a safe way. But, you know, I, I think we really need to get on our state and even our federal legislative body to kind of figure out that money that came into Pennsylvania, I think was in the tune of $3.9 billion. But it's like discretionary money goes to the state. But at the end of the day, it's the legislative branch that gets to dole it out. You know, it's really not the governor gets to pick and choose winners. I mean, because they're going to put the stipulations on it and, and pass it. So, you know, and I'm sure it's going to be a dogfight down, down in Harrisburg. But I think we, you know, all we want is, is kind of get a better pulse on, on the bigger picture.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. McGinnley, it's Sheila. Harry, I have a question. The declaration or the extension of the declaration, do your constituents look at that as opposed to the color code that we're in? Like, does, do they, I, I didn't think that, that many people really understood the declaration or even were aware of it. They look at whether you're in green, yellow or red. That's the only thing I thought it was. I mean, if you have another position or another thought process.
What, what's the thought process, Sheila? And first of all, you know, it's all our constituents. And believe me, I, I have some constituents that are downright scared. They're terrified. You know, I have all my own family members that don't want to leave the house still. And I, I just think that this continues to paint the narrative that this is something that it's not. You know, and I, I'm not going to get into the science, but now, you know, someone was just talking before about finding a vaccine for this. It's a virus. There's not going to be a vaccine. It's just not going to come. You know, this is not, this is not a bacterial thing. So we keep on painting.
That's not true, Harry. They have a vaccination.
All right. Let, let Mr. Haas finish.
I'm just saying, I, I'm just saying, it's, it's playing the narrative. And yeah, it's, I think it's, in many cases, it's a false narrative. And again, I, I like what Steve said, hey, look, we all agree, we flatten the curve, we want to be, take all precautions out there. But at the same time, there, there is a lot of hypocrisy coming out of the Capitol. And people have had enough. Like, people are not stupid. They, they pay attention. They're well red, they're better red than I am, a lot of people that I talk to. And I think this is just another tool to help build the case that, that this is something that it's not. It's, it's been overblown in many cases. And now we're, we're looking at massive debt. We continue to have these, these emergency declarations. Now we've got separate governors that are rewarding, the, the federal government is going to have payouts now to states that keep shuttered. Whereas states that are opened, now that's, now they're going to fit the bill for states that have deliberately shut down their own economies. And again, on the local level, it's not necessarily our job. That should be the state, the state legislators. But at the same time, we need to make sure that we are using our smarts in every area we can. Emergency declaration, which does impact Luzerne County operations. But again, it's, it's part of that narrative that keeps on being put out there. There's a lot of disinformation. And really, in my time on council, this has been one of those frustrating things that I can't even get my questions answered when I deliberately call the Capitol. And I'm an elected official that is, is commissioned to carry out the will of the state. We're commissioners. We're, we're council people. But we are only as good as the state will allow us to be. That's why I've always supported manager Pedri and what he needs to do, because that's just good leadership. Well, we've got a total vacuum of leadership directionless coming out of Harrisburg. And I, I can hear it in my voice. I am giving the frustrations of many people that I talk to. It's got to stop. And we need to continue to send this message. And, and, you know, on the legislative, we can continue to reach out to state legislators. But this is, this is what's simmering out there. And with everything else going in the country, you know, the governor needs to bring us together. And this is extremely divisive. It keeps on coming up. It's a slap in the face.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, this is Mick, don't worry. I do want to, you know, kind of chime in there with the displeasure of the governor with, again, with the hypocrisy of him, you know, not following his own order and protesting side by side with people, even though he did wear a mask. I know protesting is certainly an allowable thing. But I'm certainly, and, and so many people are displeased with that. Again, with businesses that can open up safely and have not been able to. And he was very, you know, hypocritical by doing that. And just want to say that that is very displeasing to so many people. And unfortunately, there's nothing that we can do. We can only try and hope that he will open us up. And I was expecting that last Friday, and it didn't happen. So again, it was another date come and not, you know, met with, with us opening or moving on to the next stage. So I just want to state that, you know, hopefully that will happen this Friday and that we can finally get our businesses going. Because I have people calling and explaining, you know, how, how bad this is every day, every day that goes by, how devastating it is for their business. And again, we want to do it in a safe way. I've done that in my own business. I have done every step, taken every step to do that. And luckily, real estate was able to open. But there are still the businesses out there that have not. So again, I just wanted to express that concern and hope that the governor does open us up.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. McGinnley, it's Sheila. I just wanted, Harry, you know, can have a vaccine for a virus, not just a bacteria. In fact, polio is a virus. I mean, there are many, many vaccines for viruses.
Okay.
They retard the virus. They don't, they don't kill it. They don't cure it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Down the flu virus. I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Anyone else? If not, we're moving down to the first item on the county council, which is the Luzerne County Transportation Authority. The question of local match. Who is on the line from the Transportation Authority?
Hi, this is Randy Lishman, Director of Finance, along with Joe, Joe Rozell and Joe Bluzik, our solicitor.
Very good. Who's going to speak?
Well, I, I could start it off.
Okay.
Basically, basically, as the State Act 89, Section 1513 allocation for fiscal year 2021, we were awarded $6,411,756, which represented a 3.7% increase over fiscal year 1920 by the state. In order for us to receive that, the required in Act 89 of 2013, the local match would be $682,929. And that's a 5% step up from, from previous years, which still is, is short of the goal of the 15% match. But so at, at this point, we'd be up to about 10.6% match. So in order for us to, you know, receive the proceeds or the funding from the state, we're requesting the $682,929 from the county.
Okay. Council people, anyone with a question for Mr. Lishman?
Mr. McGinnley, it's Walter.
Go ahead.
Mr. Lishman, what's the reserve accounts that you have in the LCTA in your, your savings account or?
I, I mean, currently, right now, we have a $2 million cash balance.
Surplus?
Not a surplus, a two, a $2 million cash balance at this point, which, you know, obviously, that's at, at a point in time. I mean, we, we have, you know, on an annual basis, we run a deficit on the shared ride part of our business. And, you know, we, we don't really have, you know, additional funding, you know, in reserve.
One of the, one of the concerns I have, and there's another, there's another item on the agenda for the Hazleton Public Transit coming up next. My, my, my concern is that we're constant, we're giving money out to the Hazleton Public Transit when that's something that the LCTA probably should be handling. They are part of Luzerne County, and I know this has been an ongoing issue between LCTA and Hazleton Public Transit. So I, I think, I, my, my idea about the funding part should be that we take out a portion of that funding we would give to LCTA and give it to Hazleton Transit Authority or Transit, Public Transit, I'm sorry, so that they could get their funding. Because the county, I mean, we're all strapped for cash. There's no question about it. Everybody needs money. But we can't continually fund the Hazleton Public Transit and, and, and the LCTA at the same time, when clearly the LCTA could be running the buses down there. Something has to happen. Either LCTA can talk to Hazleton Public Transit and may, maybe get in collaboration with them to take over that service, or at least goes some way to fix that, that whole issue. But that, that's my thoughts. I, I just think that I don't have a problem with giving the, 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 the matching funds for LCTA. But somewhere, we have to get the money for the Hazleton Public Transit. And so I, I would suggest that we take it from the LCTA matching grant funding. So that was, that was my thoughts. Seems how you have a $2 million surplus for you guys, for you guys to lose. $60,000 is probably not going to be a big hit for you.
I think, first of all, I, I don't think he said it was a surplus. But the, Mr. Lishman?
Yes.
It's a cash balance and.
If we reduce the amount of money that was coming from the county for the match, what does that do to your state funding? what does that do to your state funding?
Well, that's, that's the issue. I mean, the, the state funding actually mandates us to be up to a 15% match, which would be $961,000. However, they're allowing the 5% step up. The, the state, I, I think our state funding of $6.4 million would be in jeopardy.
Okay.
Well, you would have to just lower, you would have to lower the amount of money, right?
Well, that, that would depend, again, it's Joe Bluzosik, it would depend on coordination with, with the state and I'm sympathetic to the concerns that Hazleton runs a service and we here at LCTA run a service, but that historically is how transit evolved in the county. We didn't choose not to service one part of the county at the expense of the other, but I think where we're at, if, if the suggestion were followed, I think that's what would happen. The effect would be that we'd have less operating funds to service what is our area of service, which is a much greater area right now. And I think as it's been reported in various places, we've, we've gone out of our way to try to expand service, including night service. We, we're serving industrial areas that we hadn't served previously. Certainly with the COVID issues, we, like everybody else, have had impacts on our operating revenues because of a decision to be safe, but yet still provide service. We stopped charging fares, so we get some fare box revenue, but now that's not available at least short term. So all I'm saying is I think we're asking, now is not the time, I think, to put us in a dowsing match with another agency when we weren't the originators of how those two agencies got to be separate. We're always available and we work certainly with Colts, we work with Hazleton Transit. We, we try to maximize the resources where we can, but I, I just don't think it helps not to be able to achieve the funding that we're eligible for. And I, I'm saying that that's the concern I'd ask council to consider. We're not asking for more than we need, we're asking for exactly what we need to meet the state funds.
What was, what, what was the amount of funding we, we gave last year?
5% less than what it is.
Yeah. 600 and maybe 60 some thousand.
So there's an increase this year of 80,000, right?
That's correct.
No, there's, there's an increase of about 20 some thousand.
But that increase is because of the fact that we got a proportionate increase in the state branch.
Right.
Well, it doesn't say you're getting, asking for 680, 682,000?
Yes, it does.
And you just said 602, right?
No.
660.
I said 660, somewhere around there. I don't have the number in front of me, but you know.
That was last year's allocation.
So it's a 5, 5% increase? As Mr. McGinnlitt.
That's correct. Every, every year, there's a 5% step up.
Until we get to 15%, right?
Right.
That's the goal of the state.
Well, again, I think, I think we have the same issues with bus services we do with the levy fee and with the bridges and the roads and everything else, as everybody's, you know, nobody, a lot of people don't use the buses, I'm not saying they're not important, they are. I'm not saying that, you know, funding them is not a critical thing, but at some point along the way, people have to be, especially carry their fair share down and, you know, for that other service. And I don't see the duplication of service going away. And, and, you know, I, I just think that that's one of the problems that has been coming up in county councils all the years that I've been attending as public. And now as a council member, it's the same problem, so. And I don't know how to rectify it, that's something you guys will have to figure out. But on the funding side of it, somebody has to start picking up their share. Hazleton City doesn't pay anything.
Well, wait till we get to, wait about the.
So I mean, that's, you know, that's the concern I have, so.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, thank you. For the LCTA people, and we'll move down to Hazleton Public Transit.
Thank you.
Request also for local match. Who's on the line? I know Mr. Sharp was on earlier, I don't know if anybody else joined him from the Hazleton group. Mr. Sharp? Do you have to unmute your mic?
Mayor Cassatt is here.
Okay, would you, Mayor Cassatt, do you have your mic unmuted? Do you want to speak to your request here?
Could you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mayor, could I, Mayor, would you like me to?
Yeah, you, 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 go ahead.
Okay, Hazleton was allocated, yes, Hazleton was allocated $2,174,972. Our local match requirement to receive those funds are $180,036.
I think you heard some of the comments that preceded this discussion. America's hat or Mr. Sharp, do you want to respond to those?
Well, I mean, I understand what, what's being said, but historically, Luzerne County has funded Hazleton. So in my feelings are, you know, we're getting two, over $2 million for $180,000. We do, we do supply service, we do bring people into Luzerne County, they are spending money, they have jobs in Luzerne County, we're taking people from Luzerne County into other counties for, for work and whatnot. This $2 million is going to employ people, supply services, and it's going to bring income into Luzerne County. That's why we're asking for these funds.
Okay, Miss, Mayor Cassatt, do you have any other comments?
No, I, I agree, there's a lot of people that come from outside of Hazleton that work in the industrial parks. I believe the industrial parks in Hazel Township are one of the biggest provider of tax base to the county. So I think it's pretty vital that we fund the Hazleton Transit, we keep bringing these people to work and we keep the factories down here operating.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Sharp or Mayor Cassatt?
Yeah, this is Urban here. So Kim, Kim, you guys supply us with the ridership numbers for the last three to five years?
Yeah.
Have that sent over to us?
Okay.
The answer was yes, I don't know if you could hear, Mr. Sharp was, his voice didn't seem too strong there, but he said yes.
Okay, thank you. And possibly if you have a route breakdown.
Pardon me?
And maybe like by route?
Yes, okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My last comment, Mr. Chair, Harry Haas.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this, this inappropriate time, I'll also discuss the issue that was never completely followed through on with the neighboring counties to our south. You know, we're providing service then with residents that live there to the tune of $20,000 some dollars on our end. And I don't think that was ever quite followed through on, so perhaps, you know, Hazleton City can do that. You know, we're, we're paying $186,000 to, to help the city out with their funding. And I, I think if we could have a unified front on that, it would benefit all Luzerne County taxpayers too.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Snake, go ahead.
Yes, if we could have the same information from LCTA with their ridership also.
We can make that request, that's not a problem.
If we're requesting Hazleton, I want LCTAs also.
All right.
Yeah.
That's fair.
That's, Mayor Cassatt, that's, I have a question, so if we're looking for money from Carbon and Schoolkill, what does Lackawanna give Luzerne County for the ridership that goes into, into there? Isn't that the same thing that you're asking us to come up with from Carbon and Schoolkill? But Lackawanna does not participate either?
I'm not quite sure about that, Mr. Mayor Cassatt, we can find out, but I'm not sure about that. Go ahead, Mr..
Well, that one, if I could, Mr. Chair, with that one, and, and again, I'm all about information.
Mr. Hos, Mr. Griffith had the, I'm sorry, Mr. Hos.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Griffith was next. And then you could follow him if you wish, go ahead, Mr.
That's fine. That's, and, and, and you know what, Mayor Cassatt raises an interesting point as well. I think what's good for the goose is good for the gander here. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna talk about Hazleton Perry, getting their money from Carbon and Schoolkill, and I remember Steve Urban at the last council meeting, speaking to Mr. Sharp about getting that money and he, he was pretty much told by Carbon and Schoolkill that they weren't going to give them any extra money, they didn't have it either. You know what, none of these counties, none of these counties are flushed with cash, ours especially, we're, we're running a $200 million deficit here in this county. And for us to spend, not that it's not important, I don't want anybody to get the impression that I'm minimizing the bus service that is provided by Hazleton Public Transit. I'm just saying that there's, there's places that we could get money from other than just coming back to the county. Either Carbon has to pony up or Shenan, or Schoolkill should pony up, or they should get riders down there, you shouldn't pick them up. That should be the deal. I mean, if they're not going to contribute to the service to their county, Lackawanna should be the same for Luzerne as well. I mean, if we're having Lackawanna County come into Luzerne County and service, then, you know, LCTA should obviously get some money from Lackawanna County if they're sending riders into Lackawanna County on their service. So I think, I think it's, it's a very delicate situation, no question about it. We have to be careful because those folks that use those buses are, are absolutely need that service. Those folks who go to the industrial parks, Mayor Cassatt said, if we take that service away and they can't get to work, that's not good for those folks and I, I would never want to do that. All I'm saying is the, the general public, we have to be very financially responsible for the dollars that we spend. And if we can get this money spread out rather than having it come from Luzerne County constantly, that saves us some money and it puts more responsibility for the other entities, that's a good thing. At the end of the day, I think that's what we should strive for, we should strive for unified bus service, as was done in the past, there was a study done that LCTA should be running that bus service up in Hazleton. There's no reason that they should have separate service up there. The LCTA is a big bus service, they should probably, they could probably, not probably be as efficient, but they certainly could help out and, and consolidate your services rather than be independent, so just something to consider. Go, go ahead, Mr. McGinnlitt.
Mr. Hos? Go ahead. You wanted to speak? Mr. Hos? Mr. Hos, did you want to speak? Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Griffith, this is Ralph Sharp.
Yes, Ralph.
When, when you talk about service with going into Carbon, Carbon and Schoolkill, Luzerne County, our, our vehicle revenue miles into Luzerne County is 89.3% of our, of our vehicle revenue miles. So Luzerne County, we go, if I broke it out, it's $160,000, 160,773 would be Luzerne County share. Carbon County is only 8.9% of our revenue miles, which would be 16,023. And Schoolkill County is only 1.8 of revenue miles. Their, their contribution would be like $3,240. So the majority of, of the local match is in Luzerne County.
Well, as long as, as long as you have those numbers, it should be no problem to get that money from them then. That's real, it's, it's real simple, just deduct it off of what you want county to give you.
All right. Mr. Hos, did you come back on? Anyone else who'd like to?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Snake.
Again, if we're going to get it from those two counties, we're getting money from Scranton also.
I agree, I agree.
I think that, I think that was requested and I think.
But, but a little history on this, I mean, this goes back to, oh, long before home rule was ever established. This practice has been for years with the commissioners.
That's why we went the home rule.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, Harry Haas, I'm sorry about that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree, absolutely, talk Lackawanna about this, although I do know Colts does run, run service down into our county, whereas HPT only runs service, the other counties don't, don't do that as far as I'm concerned. And frankly, I like, I like the business model of Hazleton Public Transit much better than, than our own LCTA. I, I think that's more efficient, just for the record, so.
Okay.
Mr. Sharp, Mr. Sharp, always a pleasure. And Mr. Cassatt, too, welcome.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
If not, we're going to move down to one of the requests that we had, public meeting, Mr. Griffith?
Yes, I, my, my concern is, and it's not a real big concern, is the issue of having virtual meetings. We're starting, the counties are, the county is open, courthouse is open, Penn Place is open, all these, all these facilities are starting to open. And I think it's time that the county council start meeting in public as opposed to virtually. I know it's really convenient to do it this way, but the public has a right to sit in on our meetings and see, see their government in action. And I think, I, and I do, I don't know if there's an issue with the council chamber room, but if there is, then we can meet somewhere else, that's, that's fine, but I think we need to take the steps that are necessary to open up our meetings to the public and move off of this platform of virtual meetings as, as quickly as possible, so the public gets a chance to sit in on their government in action.
Anyone else who'd like to comment about public meeting? Mr. Griffith, we have the floor in regards to budget amendments regarding the expenditures related to the virus.
Yeah, there's a, there's a concern about how we handle the, the monies that are coming in through the coronavirus. And I think we need to, the council needs to do budget amendments and, and put them in a revenue item like we always do, adjust the budget. We don't have a line item for reimbursement. We don't have line items for a lot of these things that the money's going to start coming back from the state under COVID, under the DCED grant money, under all of these different places. I think it's really important that the council do their due diligence and make sure that we have our, our budgetary line items in place. I'm looking at, and I know this is reimbursable expenses, but when I'm looking at wages of overtime for the sheriff's office because of the, the testing center that they had over there, we're already at 131% of overtime for the sheriff's office. Now, I understand that that money's all going to be reimbursed to us, but I think that goes to council's fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we do proper budget amendments to the budget every time we get money back, so we can track it. You have a $26 million issue that Mr. Pedri sent an email about, that we're going to get possibly $26 million just flushed into the county to reimburse us. And, and it's a good thing that we're getting the money, but I think fiduciary responsibility is key for us, especially with the auditors. When you look at a line item and you see you're 131% over budget and there's no money there, that, to me, is a budgeting problem, that is a financial problem. When we take a, a million dollars and we do a journal entry and transfer that into the Bureau of Elections to pay for election machines, that's a problem, that budget item has no money in it. When we look at items like HAVA for 343,000 that we got from the federal government for Help America Vote Act, that should be a budget amendment that gets put into a revenue item and council allocates that money out. That money was never allocated in the budget, 343,000. How can we take that money in and arbitrarily just say, well, apply it to the bond? Arbitrarily say, well, you know what, we're not going to apply it to the bond, we're going to use it to pay for expenses. That is council's responsibility, fiduciary responsibility. And I think we should start working on that and getting that taken care of properly, because this money's going to start coming in pretty quickly. And we want to make sure that we have a handle on every dime that comes in for the auditors as well as to make sure that people are accountable for the money that comes into the county. So I think that's something that this council needs to seriously put up for vote on budget amendments when we get money in and allocate it to the proper places. That 343,000 is supposed to go to pay for the election machines, for the loan, for the bond. So that was the discussion that happened when you borrowed the money, and so we should do a budget amendment for that 343,000? We don't even know where that money was transferred in, it's not, it's not in there. I mean, Mr. Swetts told us where, where he transferred it last week, but that should be something that we do as a budget amendment. So I think council needs to start doing their due diligence on that if we can, and I think sooner rather than later, because there's going to be an awful lot of money, I know that 26.3 million is money that's coming in through the COVID-19 reimbursable fund. And there's a lot of accounts that are well overspent in the, in our budget, clearly by over 100%. And there's not been a budget transfer made. Journal entries are not the proper way to do bookkeeping. Journal entries are not the proper way to do bookkeeping. If you're gonna just do journal entries to true it up, that's not gonna work.
Yeah, I don't think you want budget transfers. You're talking about budget amendments, correct?
Budget amendments, yes.
Okay.
Yes. I did start that conversation with budget amendments, right?
Right, that's right.
Okay, okay.
That's your last statement.
Yeah, yeah. So we wanna, we wanna make sure that we try and do our due diligence as a council, and I know it's a laborious task to do budget amendments. You have to have public hearings and all of those things. But the proper way to do it for budgeting, I believe, is to do a budget amendment. The money's not budgeted revenue-wise, and it's not budgeted expense-wise. That's council's job is to allocate those funds. So I think we should start on getting that done.
All right. Anyone else want to speak to budget amendments?
Yeah, yeah, you know what? If I could, Mr. Chairman, too?
Absolutely.
And I, I think perhaps, I think, again, receiving not so much direction from the state, you know, they're a pass-through for a lot of these federal funds. I, I think it might be helpful to ask us, um, ask other counties what, and I might be doing that, or best practice from C cap, too, just to kind of piggyback on what Walter said, because I think a lot of people are gonna be having this problem.
Yeah, but I think you're, uh, Mr. Griffith is correct. That should be a budget amendment, and we should go through the budget amendment process, which requires two readings, public hearing, et cetera. So I think that is correct for budget amendments.
And, and we already received the $343,000, so I think that's one of them. We could probably try to start with to transfer that money in the proper fashion or at least create accounts. If budget finance could create the accounts on the revenue side so we could try and make those things happen, that would be easier.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Griffith, codification?
Uh, yeah, the codification is probably about three, four, three years late now, I believe, uh, that we haven't done a codification according to the charter. Uh, as a citizen, I can, I brought that number of times, and I think it's time that we get RFP out there and get somebody in to council to approve, to do our codification. And I know we have a lot of things on our plates, but I think to violate the charter for three years in a row, I think it's time to, you know, to try and fix this problem as best we can. And I know there's a lot of things that we have on our plates, but maybe we can get an RFP started on that and get that. Maybe we could resurrect the one that we used a couple of years back and do that.
We did use one a couple of years back.
Yeah, so we can resurrect that.
That will fall with the clerk, the councilman, and the solicitor's office to get that work done, and we'll try to move, move that along so we do get the process started. Okay? Uh, going down, I have this numbered to number 10, I don't know, the 44 Airport Board, and I think Mr. Urban brought it up, but I think, Mr. Griffith, I would tell you that I did not stop the last week, but I will get there this week to see about that board and see about what their readings are, et cetera, to, uh, in order to be able to deal with that particular liaison.
What seems to be the problem with that, Mr. McKinley?
Well, I think during the COVID, I think they weren't around. Uh, I've stopped there multiple times over the years for different reasons. And many times I just don't hit the right time, I guess. I don't know. Uh, the Scrabbles, who are the people who operate the airport, uh, there's always a lady there, and I, many times I've said to her, please ask one of the Scrabbles brothers, I believe, to call, and I don't know the message they don't get or whatever, but I will make myself.
But then, how, does that have anything to do with appointing somebody to the airport board?
Well, as I think I told you, we don't appoint, that was a liaison position. That wasn't a member of the board. That was a liaison position with the county council.
Right, and their bylaws say the council appoints the liaison.
No, it doesn't have bylaws that says that, Mr. Griffith.
So why do they have a liaison then?
Uh, that was a request that came from Mr. Bobek as the first chairman. That's how that developed.
So, so there's nothing in their bylaws that says, nothing in their bylaws says county council sits on that?
No, no.
We just appoint the people to the board?
That's correct. We have the authority to point the people to the board. And if I'm correct, and maybe Mr. Urban remembers, I think her father was the one who sort of sponsored that board inception uh, when it was under the Commissioner former governor.
But we, we fund that and we appoint the people to the board, basically, right? The advisory board.
We appoint people to the board.
Okay.
We, we don't fund the airport. They pay us a fee to operate it. You know, I think we get a fee from the fuel. We had that report from the controller's office that talked about.
Yeah, and we run, we run it through Roden Bridge and Engineering. Yeah, they operate it. Yep, yep. Okay.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes, who's speaking?
It's, it's, um.
Oh, Linda, go ahead.
Yeah, just, um, you know, on the idea of a liaison to the board, actually, our bylaws um, say that our vice chair of council is the liaison to any boards that require it, and we did that back in 2012, um, when we needed a liaison to the workforce development board. Um, so I think Mr. Haas or anyone else who has been a liaison, it's been a voluntary thing. It's not been an appointment um, by the board, but because when we needed a representative, that was the purpose of the vice chair.
Okay. Everybody hear what Ms. Hock said? All right. Anything else? Do we have a motion for adjournment? No, excuse me. Public comment?
Mr. McKinley, if I could just make a, an announcement, I've been advised that the uh, election board meeting for tomorrow is going to be postponed. The adjudication has not been completed. Um, it will be in the next few days, and uh, we will post when the next election board meeting is scheduled.
Okay, so it's postponed for tomorrow and they'll
Correct.
announce when the next meeting is scheduled. Public comment?
Um, Mr. McKinley?
Speaking, go ahead.
Yes, this is Joe Rozell at LCTA. Can I just say, um, a confirmation as to the, uh, what exactly you were looking for? Was it three years of ridership by route?
I think that, that was the request. And also information in regards to Lackawanna County's bus service Colts, I believe it's called?
Yes, yes, I guess two comments just on that.
Go ahead.
Um, you know, any type of cutting the funding, we'd have to reallocate our service, and it's certainly gonna affect service on our end. Um, you know, Loserun County is a, a big county, and I do believe we both need, you know, Hazleton to service the southern end and ours to service the valley that we have. Um, but we are always trying to work with Hazleton and Colts to make sure we don't duplicate things and work together on stuff, but if funding is cut, certainly we'd have to reallocate service somewhere. It just, it just can't happen without that. But, um, on the Colts, they do run down into the casino and into the intermodal, like we go up to their intermodal. And we've been working on something that we're gonna try to plan for the end of the summer with meeting at the casino and meeting up in different areas. But I would just imagine that if, if, you know, we would request funds from Lackawanna County, they would probably turn around and request funds from us as well for Colts, you know, because they're basically doing the same thing. I think the three organizations, we do try to cooperate where we can, and, you know, we haven't done any type of consolidation, but I do think we do try to work well together. You know, say that, you know, for, we work well with Ralph and with Bob in Colt.
Thank you. Members of the public?
Mr. McKinley, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Yes, I would like to give an update on what the state senate just voted on the termination of Governor Wolf's emergency declaration. The vote was 30 to 19, so the resolution was adopted. Uh, House Bill 836 will now go to the governor's desk uh, within five business days. So I just wanted to make that update aware for the county council and the county manager. And as you know, 7301A of Title 35 says uh, that the general assembly may terminate the declaration at any time and that the governor would have to announce that the resolution to end the emergency declaration was adopted. Uh, I would like to point out for, with regards to Hazleton Public Transit and the LCTA, the history background. Uh, if you, as you know, Mr. Chairman, uh, the history of it, uh, when there was the, um, discussion for the merger, uh, I think that there was, one of the points of contention at the time was because Hazleton Public Transit has, uh, and maybe Mr. Sharp or the gentleman from LCTA can correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, the drivers, uh, that are, for LCTA are union represented drivers, whereas Hazleton Public Transit drivers are at will, uh, contract, under contract with a vendor that, um, you know, provides or the, uh, the drivers, or, uh, yeah, they provide the drivers to drive the buses that are owned by the Hazleton Public Transit. So I think that's, uh, one of the points of contention that happened in the past, and also with regards to the routes going into Schoolkill and Carbon County, I think that was discussed by, uh, in collaboration with Can Do at the time when they were expanding the park, the industrial park, um, you know, because as the warehouses were being built, uh, I think they needed more, uh, you know, more, uh, expanded ridership, uh, for Hazleton Public Transit to transport uh, possible, you know, like the employees and, you know, to and from those work sites. So I think, um, you know, if, if, you know, I'm wrong, please correct me, but I think that, I believe that was the, the history behind it. Um, and also, Mr. Chairman, I think you and the county council and the county manager received my emails on the business, small businesses needed to be, uh, helped out during the COVID relief. I, I hope you would take that into consideration at a future work session to be discussed to help out our small businesses throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Uh, Jason Carr, Salersburg, Pennsylvania.
Mr. Carr, you have the floor.
Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight. Thank you.
You have the floor. Go ahead.
Just two quick items. Yeah, two quick items, uh, regarding the leases that you were speaking about earlier tonight. Uh, what are the names of the owners of the businesses? Or the owners or the names of the companies that own the buildings that you're leasing from? And are they related to anyone inside the courthouse?
Which leases you're speaking about?
Secondly.
Mr. Carr, which leases?
Uh, regarding the ones in Kingston?
Yeah, that's the Kingston Municipal Building. Yes, owned by a, a private owner that's owned by Kingston Municipality.
And the domestic relations is, involves the Bernard Berminski Building.
Which is a county facility. Go ahead, you had something else, Mr. Carr?
Yeah, last, last item, uh, regarding Councilman Griffith's proposal to have wise meetings again, uh, just as with the election that with allowing the schools to allow you to come in and put up the voting machines throughout the precincts, uh, wouldn't it be advantageous to consider an auditorium at one of the schools with a capacity ceiling of 1,000 seats where social distancing could be, uh, required? And everyone would remain safe and the public would be able to meet with their county government in person safely according to CDC guidelines. Uh, greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Mr. McKinley?
Yeah, who's that?
Yes, Brian Shiner.
Go ahead, Mr. Shiner.
Okay?
Yeah, go ahead, please, Mr. Shiner.
There's a word that I use occasionally with meetings, and the county manager does not like it, but it's incompetence. The fact that the lease for the magistrates in Kingston for the office is five years expired is complete incompetence. The fact of these meetings being conducted the way they are in virtual without being able to be on the same platform, because we have to use separate platforms because we have to keep the public out of this because the public is not part of our government, it's incompetence, and it must end. Thank you.
Thank you. There's someone else?
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Ron Knapp?
Go ahead, Mr. Knapp.
I'm speaking, Ron Knapp. Oh, thank you. Um, I concur with, um, Councilman, um, uh, Griff, Walter Griffith, uh, in respect to open forums, um, and public places, uh, if they could do convergence for the election process and, and the larger facilities. Um, I think that, that it should be worked out uh, that the public can meet with the, the appointed parties or elected officials. And, you know, and respect to this is exactly what the last man stated, and that is this format that we're using, it seems via the video and then phoning in two different platforms. When I stated this earlier, the fact of the matter is Zoom is being used by many affiliations, and it had worked without a, a problem. It was seamless. And it seems to me that this is, this was inadequate in the way it was, um, set up. Uh, it's just not, it's not working this way. And, well, actually, not least, I'm 100% behind Councilman Haas and Councilman Urban in respect to, um, um, really putting, putting in, uh, need to put a stop to this, um, yellow case and get protection from, uh, our governor. Um, if he felt it was sinful enough to be with, uh, out in, in the public and in the protest environment, even though he was wearing masks, he was still not social distancing, and, um, it just seems to me that, uh, it's, it's a complete facade. It's, um, something to just keep us halted from moving forward and, and getting families uh, and businesses and revenue coming back into the, the coffers, uh, which we need so much of, um, number one, to get families back, back on the streets. And, um, fight will slow down the PFAs that are being issued. Um, it's still definitely that this is, uh, uh, overreach by our governor, and, um, it has, it has to come to an end. It does. And that way, we can do, uh, our best to, to get our economy back and roaring again, just as it was before the COVID. Thank you, Tom.
Anyone else in the public?
Mr. McKinley, the resolution was amended, so it will have to go back to the House before it goes to the governor. Just thought I'd make that clarification. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, if not, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Uh, Mr. McKinley.
Who made the motion, Mr. Urban?
No, I just wanted to say something. I don't know if you called on me before. I had a work call to take real quick, so.
Oh, I, no, I didn't call you, but go ahead.
Um, it was just regarding like the 44 Airport Advisory Board, if, if you were gonna plan on putting a council member on that.
Well, did you hear what Ms. Hock had to say?
No, I, I missed that. I guess that was.
She said it's covered in the bylaws that the vice chairman is the person who would be the liaison.
Okay.
All right.
Gotcha.
Very good.
And I just wanted to make one comment to Mark Raybo's. I mean, most likely the governor will veto that house or that bill, so.
Very good. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Present it.
Mr. Sneak, do we have a second?
Second, Kendra.
Thank you. All favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carried. Thank you. Stay safe. Enjoy the sunny weather.